So again, just wanted to give you a high level overview. We call the meeting to order. We're going to do a CCHS student updates. We have Zaria here. We have some folks online. We'll do that. We also have some recognitions for the MEKO student ambassadors that we're going to announce as well. So if you want to stick around for that. We do a public comment. So anyone that has feedback, we just asked, there's a blue sheet in the front of the room. If you wanted to fill it out and hand it to me or Carrie, we'll queue that up and we'll call on you and we'll also take some from Zoom if there happens to be any. We do something called the consent agenda. We usually approve things like minutes, budgets, payroll, all that good stuff. Correspondence where we tell you all what kind of emails we get as a district. We don't go into great depth, but we have an overview of what those are. Our discussion today is actually going to be on social studies, K through 12. So we have Shelley here to go through that. And then we do go through our budget and we go through a guideline. So that can be a little dry if you're not into that. But we're going to cover it. So it's here. And then we have Dr. Hunter's here. He's going to do our superintendent update. The chairs, myself and Carrie will give a quick update. I was saying, if you're interested in knowing more about the opening of the middle school, I'm going to defer most of my time to Carrie and Dr. Hunter to have a chance to go through that because it's really exciting. And we also have liaisons update. So for example, we have somebody that liaises to the special education. We have liaised to our campus completion projects. You may have heard about the amenities building that's going in. And then we have some action items where we're going to vote on a couple of things. One of them is to create a launch retail revolving accounts. We have a really great, great space in Concord Center for our launch program. And then we're going to vote on the CPS Building Service Worker Agreement. And then we adjourn and we'll be out of here by eight because we have to be. So that's kind of how it is. Please don't feel, I know this, the room is packed. If you want to come and go as you please, please feel like you're, you're not going to bother us by doing that. So just wanted to give everyone that out. All right. Had a good overview?
Excellent.
Okay, awesome. Zaria, do you want to start with the update?
They are online, so I can figure out.
You can come up here with us if you want.
That was good.
Trying to figure out how you can see them.
Can we hear them? You guys?
They can.
Oh, we got you.
Okay. Sorry, you might want to come over here because they probably won't be able to hear you.
You're okay with it.
Sorry. Run center.
We just got off of a week long break, February break, obviously. And most of the students are getting back into the Gruber School. This is now the longest period we have without a break. So I feel like students are going to be a lot slower. And yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
So over February break, oh, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, thank you. Over February break, there were two school trips. So the first, there were students who take Spanish. They went on trip to Cuba, which seemed really fun. And that's the photo on the top right. And then there was also an exchange trip to France. So students who are paired with another student who lives in France, I think it's a town around Paris. They went there for two weeks. Actually, they left the week before break and they were there for two weeks and seemed like a really fun trip. And they got to go around Paris. I think they saw Versailles and it seemed like a really great, and both trips were really immersive for the languages. So it seems like a great experience.
Yeah, I also had a lot of friends who went on both trips, or I guess not both at the same time, but like friends who did go on each of the trips. And they are all saying like, they really wish that they could have spent longer. It was really like only a lot of positive feedback. Also today during lunch blocks, there was a military fair in the Learning Commons and there was actually a lot of involvement there. There were a lot of students who were curious about these opportunities that aren't necessarily like the most stereotypical like after high school path. But it was really great to kind of have that different perspective as well.
Yesterday afternoon, we had BSU Pollock. We invited two schools to come to our school. I forget which schools.
Bedford and Wakefield.
Yes. And we had a lot of fun. We had, we had Black History trivia. We had food and games. It was really fun. And I feel like this is something that the BSU will hold up for years and really fun. Rehearsals for Shrek have begun. And as you know, we do performing arts update every single time. And both me and Felicity are in the play. So.
Yay.
And they, he's.
When is it?
Felicity, do you?
It is May 8th and I will remind you every meeting as a publicity manager.
We also have.
Yeah, awesome.
We have playoffs starting for various winter sports at CC. So I think the first men's hockey game is tonight for the first round of the playoffs. And then ski and a couple other sports, I think swim, track, they had states meets already and at ski, I do, I'll find ski. So we had the men's team won second place. They got a nice trophy and then girls got sixth. So that's very exciting for our team.
Awesome.
And congratulations.
Thank you. And in addition, we have spring tryouts, which are starting in a lot of preseasons. Like I've seen a lot of lacrosse sticks in the locker room. So I think girls lacrosse must be starting their tryouts and practices. And we also have a Student Senate Spring Sports Fair, which will happen either in the Learning Commons or the cafeteria. And we pretty much have tables set up with the captains and students can look around, see all their options and talk to some people who are experienced and may have been on the team for a while. And they can figure out if they want to play a sport in the spring. So that's a great event that Student Senate runs.
Yeah, and that's happening this Friday, which is like very soon, even though Maddie and I are both on Student Senate, we were like, wow, that's soon. But also upcoming is the Multicultural Food Festival, which is going to be this Monday evening. And I think it starts at like 5:37 or something to accommodate for, that is sundown time as it takes place during Ramadan, which I'm sure many members of our community really appreciate that specific detail. And the Multicultural Food Festival is always like one of the most popular events, I think, that class government runs every year. People from all over the community, students, teachers, parents, they all bring like literally a taste of their own culture. And it's a great way to build community and to appreciate diversity. So that's always one of my favorite events and I'm very excited. The IQH Fest is going to be, I believe, next Saturday, March 8th, I believe it is, which is run by WIQH, which is our radio station. And that's always also a really great opportunity with a lot of student performers, student bands. And there's always some like surprise about who, like which of my friends actually like does a lot of like rock and roll in their free time, which I did not know. But that's always very exciting for all of us to see as well. So many exciting things happening.
That's awesome. Well, thank you. Sorry, you don't usually get a round of applause. That's great. Do you want to kick off the recognition?
So we wanted to specifically be sure we recognize some students who've taken on some leadership roles. The ambassador program at the high school is a follow-up to some of the work we did a couple of years ago. And in the feedback we heard was really clear, we needed some student voice to meet directly with the administration. So I want to invite Malenti and Katie Saul and Brian Miller up. They're going to talk about what's been happening. And then we're going to take a minute to recognize the kids.
Yeah, so. So the ambassadors program is a program that we started last year where we have MEKO students from each grade level come in and talk about some of the issues that they've been facing in their classes and some ideas that they want to see happen at the high school. And they meet with myself and the admin team about once a month.
Yeah. And I think what's really great is that they, so we have two representatives for each grade. And these kiddos are responsible for kind of like taking the pulse of their grade and finding out like, what are kids talking about? Like what are kids worried about? What are kids liking? And just kind of being the liaison and like the feedback loop back to the admin team to talk about, you know, what the sophomores are thinking or the juniors might be wanting to see or the seniors are questioning. So it's been really great. Malenti is really awesome of bringing like hot chocolate or snacks. Always a bonus. And I think for me, it's just been like a great space and a wonderful chance to see the kids come together and kind of like almost serve as like mentors and like coaches to each other. So like some of our ninth graders, Leila's here. And you know, we have, we've got some kids who really, I think, look up to some of their older peers. And like, you know, kids in the last meeting were kind of saying like, you know, stick with honors, like you can do this, like it'll be hard for a little bit, but you can push through. And I think just having that positive rapport among the group has been really great. So I know it's definitely one of my favorite meetings of my many each month or each, we've kind of been bimonthly this year. But it's, it's been great to have them and I'm really happy to see so many of you here tonight. So thank you for being here.
That's great. So I think what makes sense, we have some certificates. I'd like to read everyone's name off and then if you could stick up here, I might hand them to you as we name them off. But if you don't mind, if you're here, come on up. So Mark Johnson.
What's your grade if you come up? Your grade, picture? Oh.
Love it. Deidre Rosa?
Their other top grade representatives.
Awesome. Alexis Britius?
Love and rain.
Amelia Razak?
One of our seniors who will be leaving out.
Elizabeth Horner? Okay, Leila Smith. All right. Like I said, now we're getting into the meat of the meeting. So for the public comment, does anyone have any public comment? Again, it's three minutes.
Can I just remind them, you're welcome to go at any point because this is going to shift into all of our normal business.
Yeah.
We love you to stay, but feel free to go.
Yeah. I don't think we've seen any online yet, right?
No.
No.
Okay. And I don't think we have any in the room. But again, as we move into more of the consent agenda and budgeting, I just really again, wanted to say thank you for, for hosting us. And also thank you, I'm so happy we had a chance to recognize everyone and see everyone get a chance to meet all of you. So thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Again, stick around if you want. This is, it get really interesting. So we have no, moving on to public comment.
That was definitely the best.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So we're going to move into the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the February 26th consent agenda.
Second, we have a secondary here?
Oh, great.
Okay, we have a new discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Good save.
There you go. Yeah, you give him a second.
So I don't have co-hosts for some. I need to get her.
Do you need a close?
Barbara's doing it from.
Oh, okay.
Shelley, you have to accept the panelist invitation.
I'll do the first one. All right.
There we go.
Why don't I move correspondence below? Let's just move into Shelley's, right?
Yes.
We're going to move correspondence to after Shelley's update so that she can do it in case anyone wants to see the social studies.
Great.
So for those of you who are still in the room that want to listen, we're going to actually go into the social studies update. Shelley's going to take us through that in just a second.
Yes.
I don't know. Nothing's working right.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrew? Sorry, can you put those guys back up there? I'll watch better than.
Reveal.
Okay.
What did?
I'll leave the person right up.
All right, floor is yours, Shelley.
Call me already?
Yeah. Social studies.
So I have to, I gotta get the slide back up.
Go ahead, take a minute, man.
Yeah, but I wasn't. These are the teachers.
Yeah, awesome. They can hear us, so. Good. I actually feel like we should have the meeting like this all the time.
Yeah.
Getting a lot done. Yeah. All right, we got it.
All right.
All right. So thanks. I'm just really cooling up for the folks that are online right now. So I'm just going to summarize and acknowledge a few of the curriculum experts that I have on hand for setting about social studies, K through 12, history and social sciences. So I've got Allison Forsetter for elementary, Strickland Coordinator. We got Robbie Robbins for the middle school and Johanna Glazer for high school. Really just to summarize and highlight what I've learned so far in my eight months here is that they really work closely with all their colleagues to build a curriculum that recognizes our global, national and local history and recognizing that these social sciences have to be brought to life. And they really do that. I mean, we know we're fortunate to be here in Concord, to have such a rich local history to draw from for Massachusetts history, but also across the state. And they will be sharing with you about the K through 12 Massachusetts standards and the frameworks, but really to highlight this idea of skills, competencies and knowledge that they should be bringing at each grade level. And this is, I would say, really challenging, challenging work. Because it is also about these seven skills that Desi really promotes and pushes. And a few of them that I really want to acknowledge that all of our educators are working to build on. It was really about how do we analyze purpose and point of view and evaluate sources and distinguish opinion from fact? Evaluate the credibility, accuracy and relevance of each source. And argue or explain conclusions using valid reasoning and evidence. And then of course, taking informed action as engaged citizens of our communities and society and in a democratic, you know, government structure. So I would say, I just really want to highlight this idea of critical literacy and media literacy. Because when we think about sources and evidence and understanding what the different perspectives or viewpoints are, it is, I'd say, a really challenging time, as you know, because we are so media saturated and so overloaded with so much information. And so I want to applaud all of our educators who think about this critically from kindergarten through grade 12, that it's high level, complex thinking that we have to do. Some other things just to think about is that we really in social sciences and history, it's about essential questions and deepening students' understanding of government societies, both, you know, ancient and modern. And then of course, our local and our state history. And you are all probably familiar with the kind of civics work that the state has really pushed. And you'll hear a lot of that from all of the, you know, our curriculum experts to talk about this, about how it's really about action oriented projects. And taking, taking an understanding of what you learned, understanding a problem and thinking of solutions and being able to produce, not just critically, I guess, consume information, but how do we produce and share information that stands up for our democratic principles and stand up for justice and democracy? And this year, eighth grade will be taking their first grade eight civics test. It does not count towards accountability, but it is something that the state is looking at really in terms of this idea of civics. So if there's any questions about us, let us know. And in November was my first time and a lot of folks probably in this room went to the eighth grade civics kind of student projects to see those. And I saw some really great activities happening there related to just mental health or whatever other challenges the students saw and wanted to, to commit to and engage others in bringing awareness and action. And really, you know, just again, I really want to commend our educators when they think about how to engage in discourse and civic dialogue, right? How can we agree to have discussions that can be challenging and difficult when we talk about different issues related to governance and just building an inclusive community and understanding the past to the present? So again, it is really challenging work. Those are some things that we are looking to continue to work on. And how to build differences across, you know, and dialogue across our different perspectives and viewpoints. So diversity is a part of that and recognizing the contributions from past and present of different cultures and groups in society. And then some highlights around professional development that the group will share. You know, they've been focused on some writing, right? Really be able to be able to build writing in and creating arguments and determining what's a valid or credible primary or secondary source. And then being able to research a topic. And then we've been also working with investigating history a little bit that Allison will share a little bit about more. So we're always thinking about how do we engage students in inquiry and deeper learning around topics that we weave in. Again, from kindergarten about just being able to name different processes and structures all the way up to really critical, deeper learning, complex thinking and really challenging problems that we're facing today. So I'm going to pass it on to, to Allison.
Really, just before they take over, I think this is a conversation with the school committee. So we don't want to just lecture you. That said, we're all coming off vacation. So you didn't get to really study all the materials the way you might have. We got them to you, you know, this week. So, but please, let's make it a conversation. We don't want to just talk at you. Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Hi. All right. My name's Allison Forsetter. I work with Shelley in the Teaching and Learning Office at Ripley as the K to five curriculum coordinator. And I know I was excited. I know Robbie and Johanna were too, that you all wanted to hear about what's happening in social studies and civics learning. Is it something that I think isn't talked about as much as in the other content areas? So this is a great opportunity for us to just give you a glimpse. And like Dr. Hunter just said, these slides you can go over at another time for a deeper understanding. But I think for, I'll just talk in two chunks and then, you know, let me know if you have any questions. For our K to two students, we really focus on building background knowledge and giving them hands-on experiences as historians. So for example, instead of just memorizing dates or locations on maps, it's really getting them to be a part of the learning. So for our youngest learners, it's really about what does it mean to be part of a community? What do you bring to a community? What do other people bring to the community? How do we live and work and problem solve together? Which is pretty wonderful for kids who are new to a school community. It fits right in. And that really reminds us all that civic engagement and being part of a group is really the foundation of a social studies learning. And so for kids that are coming to Concord or coming to one of our elementary schools as a new learner, it really brings us all together that way. And so I would say a large chunk of our K and one learning is around communities, comparing communities, building communities. There's a great picture here of a classroom from kindergarten on the slide before from Thoreau where they actually built a community. They really thought about what are the necessary buildings and structures that support the people who live in a community. So obviously it's kind of small, but they have a bank and a hospital and a post office and all the emergency workers. And so I think it's good for kids, whether, we have a lot of kids who don't live in Concord, right? Because their parents teach here, because they're from Boston. So what are some of the similar threads and they really build on that? First grade expands their community a little bit to think about the country. But then they also spend a lot of time learning about Ghana. You know, what are some similarities in those communities? What do people need in both communities and how do they get those needs met? Then there's some overlap with natural resources and things like that for science. The upper grades are actually, let's go to grade two and then I'll stop for a second. Grade two, Shelley pointed out, local history. Grade two is, is a super exciting moment where kids realize, if they don't already, the amazing place that we live here in Concord. So they get to go, they meet Louisa Mae Alcott and they go to the Orchard House. They have a visit from the Concord Museum to learn about the Garrison and Dugan families that lived in Concord in the 18th, in the 19th century. They go to Walden Pond and stumble across Henry David Thoreau, who just happens to be there and is excited to talk with them and sketch with them and draw with them. And one of my favorite stories of going on a trip with a class from Alcott was after he talked about the house site and how the kids kind of placed the furniture where it would have been, he said, does anyone have any questions for me? And one of the young students in the class said, did you ever love anybody? And all of us adults were like, you know, but it really was that they really had learned so much about him as like this famous writer, but they also saw him as like a man, a human, right? And so then he responded how he and his brother both loved the same woman at one point and he wrote her a letter and she just really reciprocate, you know? And, you know, so, but I think it was a great reminder of that kids learn best through stories. And so for example, the stories of all these families that they get to know really has an impact on them and they carry that forward. Because moving into third, fourth and fifth grade, the content gets more intense, right? There's a lot more things around geography and timelines and causes and effects of different events in history. So stories about Ellen Garrison being the first person in her family to be able to write her signature, whereas her parents could only do an X, right? The kids really think about why is that and how must that have felt? So I think the idea of object-based learning and place-based learning is alive and well, K through five, which is really exciting. So for, I'm not going to go through all the details, but I do feel like it's exciting to think of what all these things build to. And I think Shelley placed it really nicely that we want kids to be historians. We want them to be engaged consumers and producers of knowledge. And so we don't want them to just learn the history. We want them to uncover it. And as they progress, they have more of a role in that. They're asking the questions. They're designing the projects. They're challenging each other. They're role playing. With the 250th coming up, I mean, it's, I can't think of anything more exciting than for kids to really understand what it would have felt like to live along the battle road, right? To have a parent that left for the militia. They really get to toss the tea in when they go to the Tea Party Museum. And we really think about that act and what that really meant. And as Shelley mentioned, that we are always looking to support teachers' professional development around social studies and social studies learning. And I think being a part of the 250th and reading a lot of the materials that the commission is putting out and other things is really reminding people how many stories there are that they might not know and that we want to help kids see that too. Is that it's the multiple stories and the multiple perspectives that you learn through social studies that really help you develop your own understanding or your own questions around history and social studies and civics and being part of a democracy. The last slide is just sort of what's on the horizon, which is. Um, the last slide is just sort of what's on the horizon, which is exciting because we're always looking to what's next. Um, investigating history is a DESI um, developed curriculum um, that has been, is currently available for grades five, six and seven. And several of our first, our fifth grade classrooms are in the midst of learning, implementing and rolling it out in their own sort of path because of just different um, interest and availability. Um, and then there's grades three and four to, to come. And I think it's exciting because there's never been anything like this provided by the state free with real research, evidence-based inquiry, engaging lessons. Um, so it's really exciting that there's a big focus on that um, here in the state. And then as you may have heard, there is our ELA adoption on the horizon for K through five. Um, and because all the programs we're looking at are considered knowledge building, knowledge-based programs, there is a ton of opportunities for overlap between science and social studies and engineering, um, which I think will only push our social studies curriculums a little more to the forefront than they sometimes probably feel that they are.
That's great. Thank you.
Questions?
Really thoroughly, really great.
Robbie next, middle school.
Thank you very much. It's tough to follow, Allison, but I'm gonna try. Um, so um, you know, I, I, when, when we met uh, before break, uh, what was really striking to me was how middle school is absolutely continuation, you know, the same kind of values and themes that are being taught K to five. So that was good to hear right away that, you know, there's an obvious, you know, an obvious um, you know, sequence um, of learning going on with our students. So um, you know, I really wanted to highlight though, um, first of all, our, you know, our, our main values that we're really trying to promote, you know, is, is demonstrating, you know, appropriate civil discourse. You know, I think Shelley mentioned earlier, just, you know, in the time that we are now, you know, I think our students need to see, you know, teachers um, and other students just modeling, you know, what it means to be, you know, a, a, a goo- a good civic participant. Um, so starting in sixth grade, we really um, we look at global cultures. So we move all around the world. Um, starting with, you know, with um, uh, North America, we moved to Europe, to Africa, Latin America. We basically cover the entire world. And really what we're doing um, is first of all, looking at physical geography because it's, it's a world geography class. But we're also looking at human geography, how humans interact with one another, how they build global communities, how they celebrate that culture. Um, a- and so overall, I think it, it definitely fits in with a lot of what Allison was talking about while building that global community um, at the elementary level. Um, we also then, because it's uh, studying political geography, we do start thinking about different types of governments. Um, which will lead us then um, into our seventh grade curriculum. Um, where students um, in seventh grade um, really start learning about ancient civilizations. So they're going to be focusing on ancient Greece and ancient Rome and the roots of democracy. Um, and different forms of government, um, leading, you know, from tyranny and oligarchy all the way up to what, you know, we would consider today, you know, republican government um, in the United States, um, representative democracy. Uh, and so they're, they're continuing that, that civic theme. So they learn in sixth grade about these, you know, different forms of government. And then they're applying it to actual, you know, ancient civilizations um, in seventh grade, which then gives them a foundation, these students, for when they then enter eighth grade. Um, and the entire course is really revolves around civics uh, and US history. Um, and so everything that they've learned in the sixth and seventh is, i- is integrated right into the eighth grade curriculum. Um, in eighth grade, obviously, it's, you know, much more intensive. Um, the, the students um, are involved in their civic action project, which Shelley had mentioned earlier, uh, which students this year showcased in the fall. Um, and, and they, you know, they, they research a topic, they get engaged in their local community. They reach out to um, representatives, maybe it's somebody in a professional field. They try to get feedback from those people, uh, which then helps them try to promote some type of a project that they believe can better, you know, their local community and, you know, perhaps a state or even on a national level. Uh, so i- it's a project that began a few years ago. Obviously now the state is, you know, put a lot of, you know, a lot of their, their time and energy and they've made it official that, you know, all schools need to be doing this. You know, fortunately, we were doing it before the state even told us that we needed to be doing it. So we feel like we have a really good project going. Um, students, you know, get really engaged. I think they feel like they can have a voice, an appropriate voice. Once again, that modeling civil, you know, appropriate civil discourse. Um, but at the same time, while they're doing this personal project, this action project, they're also learning about US history, you know, from the, the thirteen colonies all the way up through the Civil War and Reconstruction. Um, and the US Constitution. So the, the fourteenth amendment um, becomes a big part of the course. Because what we're actually looking at throughout US history are marginalized groups. Uh, people in US history that did not get the rights that were promised to them over time. And so our lens of teaching US history is very often, um, trying to bring in some of these other voices that um, you know, have been sort of, I guess, downplayed, you know, previously in history. I think the good part is now people are really starting to tap into some of these other stories. It also represents our students much better, you know, our multicultural, you know, diverse classroom. You know, it's much more represented when you hear stories about all different groups um, in US history. Um, and so kind of the combination of, you know, what's been learned K to five, in learning about, you know, world geography and cultures in sixth, you learn about the ancient civilizations in seventh, which brings you to this culmination of eighth grade. Uh, it seems like the capstone, um, it's become, I think, the capstone of the, of the eighth grade experience at Concord Middle School um, is this civics project um, in, in connecting to their local community. Um, we have been connected with the League of Women Voters. They've helped us very much and supported us um, throughout this project. So um, I did want to give a, a shout out to them because they have really um, backed us up and, and given us a lot of energy. Uh, but overall, um, I, we feel like between that curriculum and our emphasis on research, um, that we have, you know, met with the high school several times, um, just to, to ask, what do you expect? You know, when a ninth grader steps into CCHS, you know, what type of research skills do you want them to have and, and do you need them to have? And so over the last, you know, I'll go back the last decade, I think we've really honed that research project um, sequentially between sixth and eighth grade. So students come into ninth grade, from what we've heard, you know, very prepared um, for, for, for ninth grade research. So overall, um, you know, I, I feel like there's a lot of great things happening. Obviously we have a new school, so thank you to everybody on this Zoom. Um, and so I'm excited about all our new spaces at that school. Um, you know, looking forward, as Allison said, they're looking forward. I'm looking forward at the new school. Just trying to, to, to integrate all these new spaces we have and our common areas and see how we can, you know, use that for social studies. You know, how can we use that for our projects and you know, our action projects for, for civics and um, so thank you very much for all that space, too.
Great. Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, high school?
Yeah, Johanna, do you want to go up?
Sure. Good evening. Um, I'm Johanna Glazer. I'm chair of the social studies department at the high school. And thank you for having us here. Um, I, as I look at the world around us, I continually think about how important social studies education feels. And I'm really grateful to have the chance uh, to share a little bit of what we do, K twelve, with all of you. Um, and I do feel like there are some really terrific things going on in the social studies department at CCHS. I feel really fortunate to work with a talented team of dedicated and passionate educators. Um, and we, as a department, I, I feel like our mission is broad but really clear. We want our students to understand themselves and the world around them, uh, to know how our government works and how societies function. Um, to know their rights and their responsibilities as citizens of the country, but also as of a, a community. Um, and then to learn how to make sense of and analyze information, how to see different perspectives and to find joy in that process of learning. Um, and I think you can hear there's a lot of continuation of some of the things that Allison and Robbie talked about. Uh, there are a lot of details in the slides, um, so I'll just try to go through some of the highlights. Um, and I threw in here some quotes from students because I think they do a really nice job of explaining students' views on why social studies is so important. Um, in our ninth grade course, uh, are we, the students study world cultures. And the goal really there is to examine systems of power and impacts of cross-cultural connections. Um, and we help them at that point also develop the academic skills that they will need to be successful through the rest of high school. By the time we get to tenth grade, we turn our focus to US history and continue that examination primarily in the twentieth century of how our country has developed and our continual quest for that more perfect union. Um, US history students also complete a, another civics project. Um, and this time, again, they're researching a topic that's important to them and they're putting their focus on um, writing a letter to an elected official. Our hope is really to help students find their voice and find ways to make their voices heard. Um, so as we're working through those civics projects and we're in our second full year of this program, um, we've had some great uh, topics that students have taken on. We've also been in um, some recent conversations with the League of Women Voters and looking at how we might be able to expand some of this work as well. We are excited that so many of our students uh, care deeply about the world and are eager to make a difference. And we try to foster that and continue that throughout all four grades. After US history, and you can see this on the slides right now, um, we have a robust and rigorous program for our juniors and seniors. Uh, it's focused on giving students choices and exposing them to many different disciplines within social studies, including history, law, sociology, psychology, economics, international relations, political science and more. Um, the teachers who teach this are really experts at what they do and passionate about the courses that they teach. And the opportunities and the choices that we give to students are pretty uncommon at the high school level. Um, most people don't get this kind of choice or these kinds of opportunities until they head off to college. It's also not that uncommon for teachers to hear from our alumni uh, who tell us that they're pursuing a major or a career based on something that they learned about starting in one of our classes. So that's a quick overview of our curriculum. Um, in terms of what we're working on, uh, in all of our classes, we've been working on helping students become critical consumers of information. It's so incredibly important. We want them to be able to identify credible sources, to be able to evaluate ideas, um, evaluate bias. And in particular, in our psychology classes and uh, current affairs class, they also look at the impact of technology and social media on their lives. Um, as a department, our PD time this year has really been focused on how we engage students in social studies thinking. Through inquiry-based lessons, through examination of primary sources, text analysis, um, debate, role plays, case studies, things like that. Um, these activities really encourage students to do the work of historians or social scientists and they're fun. Um, we've also been working hard to make sure that our curriculum represents all of our students. Uh, each year, teachers have been adding new lessons designed to provide more mirrors for our students to be able to see themselves in and more windows through which they can see each other. Um, in particular, we're thrilled to now be offering a course called Through It All, The Black Experience in America. Um, this project-based course has been developed in collaboration with students, um, including some of the students I saw there earlier in the meeting. And it's off to a great start. In fact, today, uh, the group went on a field trip to the Museum of African American History and the Black Heritage Trail in Boston. We also take the social, social part of social studies really seriously. Um, and we find ways to connect to our students and help our students connect to each other and to work with each other in classes and in many social studies-related clubs. Um, we work really hard to make sure we're developing learning communities where students can communicate across differences about difficult topics. And as Allison and Robbie both brought up, that's just so incredibly important. Um, so there's a lot more I can say. Um, I really feel privileged to work with so many talented teachers and so many amazing students who are eager and come to us after their K eight experience, excited about social studies. Um, but I know I've taken up my time, so thank you.
That was great. Really good. It actually was really helpful to see K through twelve. Um, in one presentation, that was really great to see the handoffs that you have. So thank you both, thank you all for taking the time to go through that. I think we have time for a couple of questions if you, if anyone has any. At the macro level, it's okay if you don't.
I just have like a, a, more of a comment that I think the um, and this, you guys all sort of touched on this, but I think that the, the value-based um, approach is so important and um, I just loved hearing that from the, from kindergarten, how that builds upon itself through, all through elementary school, middle school, high school, and how, um, just how important values are to learning about history and who we are as a country, community, culture. So, um, I thought, thank you. It was a great job.
Yeah, well said.
I, I think English and, and his social studies have really embraced what we've embedded ourselves in as core values. And you can hear what's happening to the curriculum because of it. And I think that's just been really, really impactful and important. And it's giving kids all that lens in so many different approaches. Um, through the lens of history, through the lens of literature, through the lens of, and we're really enriching our own school community at the same time.
Even the ability, like, I mean, obviously the, the high school, we have, we have older students, but it looks like they can really kind of own their learning journey. And that's really incredible. So I applaud you for that for sure. And um, I mean, it's not just for the eleventh and twelfth graders. You can feel it even starting further back, but um, yeah, I just love that, that start, that bridge to independence and their own curiosity, um, taking charge, which is wonderful.
I'm, I'm really impressed with the emphasis on critical thinking. I mean, I, I don't know, I would, I would guess that older generations would associate social studies with memorization primarily. This is like the complete opposite of it. Um, and so I think that is super important. And I have a fourth grader doing a magazine project and he's doing some critical thinking and storytelling and kind of, to me, it starts there and I'm very excited for him to work, both my kids to work through this.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll build on that and, and again, share an observation that I have. There is so much more dynamism, like in this curriculum of, you know, Andrew mentioned the memorization of dates and countries. And it's, it is infectious. And one of the things that I have like always cherished about Concord as an alumni, there's many of us on this stage um, tonight was I appreciated so much in high school that, and, and, and in my younger years too, in Concord, being invested in your academics and studying and doing well in school was cool. Um, that was like something that kids and teachers in the community celebrated, you know. When I met people from other areas in college, it was like, you know, the cheerleaders were cool or, you know, the kids who drank beer on the weekends were cool. And in Concord, it was like the kids who cared. Um, and were invested in the community. And I think that um, our social studies curriculum has always done that. But I have noticed as a parent, it is even more dynamic. And um, even just an anecdote from today, I picked up six or seven, um, sixth graders and they all came back to my house. And I have boy-girl twins, they're boys and girls. And they, it was quiet. And I went down and they were all on their tummies, lying, doing their homework. And like, that's what they wanted to do together. And they were having fun and they were collaborating and they were sharing. And, and to me, that is like where we thrive, like making kids want to do that together and making success cool. And I just, I think a part of that is how you guys have all constructed that. So a- applause all around and more.
And this, and if I can just add, um, I probably have the oldest kids, well, since the year kids are maybe older than mine. Uh, but having like a child out of college too, in college, more than high school, it really is true that you do prepare them for college. And to have my college sophomore come home and say, gee, my Civ class is really easy because of how I was prepared at the high school. And the overlap, you know, that he had in twice told tales that then moves into what he's starting in college. And I do think that, that um, you've built upon it like right from K through twelve. It's not just the high school. We certainly recognize that K to five is hugely important. And like all of that piece of building communities and the history of Concord that they get, K to five is hugely important. And then the middle school, you build right upon that. And the high school, you're really launching off of college. So I can't impress upon all you how important the social studies department is for the preparation using the critical thinking that Andrew mentioned. Um, you're doing it and we're seeing the results of that. You might alw- you might not see the kids come back to you from college, but as parents, we're certainly seeing that. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll add in, I, I have a, I have two children who graduated from CCHS, one who's a went to college with political science major who is now a teacher. And uh, the other was an economics major, didn't do the teacher thing, but still. So you have two students who went on to major in things that they've learned about in high school, middle school and elementary school. So thank you everyone.
Yeah, that's great. And I think, you know, just to, to wrap this up, we're going to move on. But we like to ask this of any of the departments that come in. If there's things that you need, we always like to remind folks what the school committee is, you know, responsible for. And one of them is budget, but also working closely with Dr. Hunter and the other administrators. So if there's things you need, please bring it up. But we also wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to bring forth best practices. You're definitely one of them. So thank you so much for your dedication and appreciate the overview. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go back to correspondence, just really quickly. And then we'll cut, when then we'll finish out the budget and finance committee guidelines. So from a correspondence for the region, we've gotten a couple of comments on, or correspondence on the amenities building, no surprise. We've done a lot of work on that. Some of it was, I think most of us have seen it, but just around. Just really making sure we can't use the bathrooms at the high school. And again, coming back to the ADA compliance is being a big part of it. We're not gonna, that's not going to solve the issue that we have there. And then just another couple of questions on why we didn't choose the prefab solution. But again, I think we exhausted that. So that, those were the ones from the region, but you had some things at the CPS, correct?
Yeah, just a couple. Was just a question about tonight's meeting and whether it's open to the public. And then we had about five emails about our cell phone policy, which we will be discussing as a committee in the next.
One or two meetings.
One or a couple of meetings. So we'll be posting that as soon as we finalize it was detailed.
Perfect. All right. So then we're going to move back to the fiscal year 25 CCRSD budget and Concord Finance Committee Guidelines. Do you want to take that?
Yes, and I'll apologize since now I can't access anything on my computer. But I know it. Andrew's gonna come save me while I talk. Off of the screen, Andrew, before you go. So we had been in communication with the Concord Finance Committee following our last meeting. We were actually presenting to them right before the vacation. A question came up because we keep saying we're a guideline and we really look at the numbers, we're not exactly a guideline. So Bob and I spoke quite a bit since the question arose of what's the delta and why? And how are we going to solve that? The delta is because of the assessment and the enrollment shift. So Concord had a slight little tick over to them this year. And typically we ask the finance committee not to put the assessment enrollment shift in guideline. And that needs to stay the case going forward, especially with a number of new apartment complexes coming online. That said, in their efforts this year to exclude special education and the high costs we had this year. I think it makes good sense for us to have this be the exception in terms of the assessments. And for us to close that gap and communicate back to them that we are indeed at guideline. Carlisle will not be disappointed to hear we reduced the budget some because we have to do it in kind. So because they. So the delta is $63,000 ish, something like that. Between, that's the Concord delta. And then overall, it's a delta of about 90.
Oh, sorry.
Because we have to proportionally do it.
And, and Lori, we do have PNCOM members online, so they will be attached to the agenda tomorrow so they can see them all.
Yes, we, Aaron wasn't in today, so we couldn't attach. So my, our recommendation, Bob and I are recommending that you vote to approve a $95,000 reduction to the CCRSD FY26 budget. And we would take that, a $50,000 reduction to OPEB trust contribution and a $45,000 cut. To the technology, the budget that we were going to use to start replacing screens. We'll, we'll drop that in half of what we had in there. So a $45,000 balance remains, so we can still get started. And we would like to have you consider that tonight. We think communicating with both finance committees fairly efficiently will be beneficial to everyone. I know the Concord Committee has it on their agenda tomorrow night.
This to me is a no brainer. And made very good recommendations and things to cut, they don't touch kids. And I'll go out on a limb and say I totally support that recommendation.
And while Carlisle.
I think we do.
Yeah.
We do.
I'll say, well, Carlisle didn't make an ask of the region. They are making asks of other, of the public school and other departments. And there was talk last night of needing to make even more apps, so we can proactively do this. I think this will be a big win on the Carlisle side, so.
I agree.
My only question, I 100% agree with everything that's been said. My only question is around, like just future, I would love to figure out kind of a standard operating procedure about this. Because it does seem like it comes up in, in years where, where it. You know, and Carla, you guys did an amazing job last year of planning for it. You had a huge change and you were expecting it. So I'd love to figure out just like a, an actual process to make sure that we are all in.
Yes.
On the same page. And sometimes that will benefit Concord, probably not so much in the future with all of these buildings coming into play, but.
Well, all the more reasons, I think, to have a conversation.
Exactly.
I actually wondered, it was so effective to talk to folks outside of the budget cycle.
Yeah.
I actually think this might be the next conversation to ask for.
Yep. Because I certainly agree, it has to be a joint conversation.
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah.
Only just. Question is, I'm sure you debated the 50,000 for OPEB and 45 for technology. Is that the correct? Is there any benefit of cutting more OPEB in favor of replacing more of the, the hardware sooner? Or you think that this, I can't remember what each.
We fully funded OPEB at four, don't hold me to this, 425 or 450,000. I think we've started to have some discussion about what is the right number now that we're in such good shape. That could be a continued discussion. I don't know how much of it you want to have tonight.
No, I mean, my question is just more.
Fair question.
Is it 60, 70 OPEB so that you can do more?
Yeah.
Technology.
Yeah.
I'll leave that to you and Bob, I support the, the overall approach.
Will we make a motion? We want to do this to the total and not do the breakdown?
You could, yeah. Then we can come back.
I think that's what the, that is what the language says.
Yeah.
It's just the total, they can figure out how to break.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the Concord Carolina, which just. Prove a 95K reduction in the regional school budget in the amount of 40,384,952.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Yep, perfect. Okay, great, done. We have about 20 minutes in theory, so I'm going to move us pretty quickly into the updates. And like I said, I, my only update was around BTG and some other small things that really like to update for us, for you guys, so.
Yeah. And then I think to talk on the new middle school building, Robbie did a nice job of kind of queuing us up on that in the last few days. So Monday, we had an extremely exciting day to welcome students into the new middle school. The energy was and remains very high, both staff and students. First, they had to explore the building, they hadn't ever been there before, many of them. So this really lovely controlled chaos opened the day with home base advisors touring the kids around. The very first all schools, sixth, seventh and eighth grade assembly ever, as far as we know. Cause we never had a space to put them all, happened a little later in the morning. We kicked it off with the very first, we were part of this unified basketball game that the middle schools had. So that was just an amazing, I, I mean, the, the support coming from the kids in the audience to the kids on this, on the court.
Good Brian's cover.
And Justin pulled a Celtic out of his back pocket to just make it even more exciting.
Had I known that, I would have ghosted you over there.
No kidding. I didn't know either until the very last minute. And, and then even lunch, you know, we get to the cafeteria and there's these enormous, amazing booths and bench seats. And round tables with chairs that move and then just a few of those traditional ones with the stools. And you can feel the energy there, the booths are very popular, you're not surprised to hear. And then to our kitchens, our food service staff who, I mean, this was a race to the finish. There is no way to describe it anywhere. It, it, I've said to you by email, like, it could have been the finale of a reality TV show, how scrambling we were to get it all done. And the food service staff was in the mix of that, having gotten a food permit on Wednesday to serve food on Monday. And boy, but they just made the whole place come to life, this scrambler servery that we felt so excited about to raise the kids. Feeling of independence and maturity just fit the mark right from the beginning. But like, we could.
To order them lunch.
Yes, you still have to order them lunch, sorry. So that was exciting and that went really smoothly. And then just to walk the classroom portion of the building, which is incredibly efficient, you can zip through all three floors fairly fast. Kids were actively learning, like I, I'm, the teachers would unpack boxes and then set us up and running. I mean, they had kids engaged with learning and, and you could see how the space was already starting. There were already kids out in those common areas in a few spots. I thought kudos to that. The, the glass walls were open now, the curtains aren't in, so they didn't have as much of a choice as they might have wanted. But just the feel of how that all is and kids super engaged in what they were getting ready to do. It's just been a fabulous few days. Not perfect, we've had things to figure out, we flipped the entire dismissal process this morning and pulled it off in a different way with parents at 1:30, which was a little crazy. You know, so we're still figuring some things out, but it's been a really fantastic opening. It's a beautiful school that's just going to serve kids so, so well. And it's just so clear from the beginning, the kids are super excited and just radiating the energy. I think we're not going to ever, we're going, one of the adults said to me, it feels like we just started a new school year. I'm calling two weeks ago last year. And I, I think we're like in a whole reset here in February. And we're going to forget what we were doing before, which is great.
Yeah.
So.
Something I hadn't considered even in my years, two years on the building committee. You know, historically, like when we were kids. You would get so nervous when you were in fifth grade, am I going to go to the PBD building or the Sandborn building? And, you know, friendships were torn apart because you were going to have three years apart with your best friend. And, and I, you know, to call it traumatic is probably overstating it. But when you're, when you're 10, it, it feels traumatic. And, you know, we sort of made progress with putting sixth graders at PBD and some of the eighth graders at. Sandborn, but there were still the, the team based groups. And in these years, the kids, you know, if, if you had a friend on a different team, you really have no opportunity to see. Sometimes, you know, the peers that make you feel safest and most confident and, and give you that sense of belonging. It didn't even occur to me, everyone's together at lunch. I think that your administrators are going to see an unintended benefit of no more calls. Can I switch my kid from this team to that team? Because it's almost becoming consequential because they're closer together. They can see their friends at the most critical time for them when they can bond. And I, you know, it was, it was just, it was really interesting. My kids sat with different kids yesterday and, and the groups got bigger.
Yeah.
And because there's the dynamic seating, I guess there are bigger tables and the, oh, we all joined our group and we all sat in the long benches. And, you know, so I think that that's really wonderful.
It's awesome.
Just something I never.
No, we realized it late, late in the, as we're getting ready to move this year, we realized the kids were going to get to see each other at lunch that hadn't had access to each other. And that was game changing. And then the, the adults who supervise were so thrilled to see the individual chairs. They're like, all that drama that was going on of we can't all fit here is just gone. They slide a few chairs over and they're all together. So we've done some really special and important things for kids that just were restricted before. Never mind the innovative and the things we haven't really had a chance to figure out yet what that space is going to build for us. But it's just fantastic. In the meantime, we handed Sandborn over to the general contractor Friday and they're up, they're already abating or queuing up to. And making progress there. So, I mean, that was lightning speed too, to go from, I stood in that building. One Thursday to say goodbye as the kids had just finished having a dynamic academic day. And the next Thursday, I'm standing there and the building's empty and there's nothing in it. And it's pretty startling, you know, how fast it all could happen. But really exciting, parents and, parents were able to come in Friday before. I, I, I live in like some blur here, like I went underground for two weeks, but before the kids.
Yeah.
And we're really excited. I think we're probably going to push off the grand community opening. In touring, been common select board members, the select board chair requested we might hold off till the 250th is over. I think it's a fantastic idea, especially as the campus is still, I mean, the winter, the winter conditions have added all this other stuff. As the campus melts and starts to come to life in the spring, the auditorium will be solidly open. We can use the outdoor space as well. I just think there's a lot of sense to that. Justin was relieved when I mentioned it to him. I think we're going to aim for May, when the world has sort of settled a little and we're in a good place and we'll invite the community in. But it's been a really great couple of weeks. It's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of work, but.
Well, I just want to say.
Really great couple of weeks.
Thank you, Lori, you and Justin, Mr. Cameron and Bob and so many other people have worked. Unbelievable hours, put in so much heart and sweat, love for this building. And we are all very grateful. And I know you mentioned this at the last finance committee meeting, but like a huge thank you to you, the staff, everybody who has moved in and made this such a. What looks like seamless, I know it probably was not.
If we, yeah, that's why we work so hard.
Exactly. What looked seamless, but also a huge, you mentioned this at the last finance committee meeting, but just a huge thank you to the entire community for. Their partnership and making it a reality, because this is a building, like you said, that will benefit our community for many, many years. And so this is a like grand opening for our kids and I love that we're prioritizing kids. But just a huge thank you to our.
My final shout out and it's, you know, the people behind the curtain with our OPM and our design team and our general contractor. They pulled off kind of miracles the last few weeks and they all looked at me last week, they're like, we have never, and they've all been in it for decades. We have never opened like this, where it's like this to the wire. And they made.
Push it back.
Yeah, they, they made that happen with, I mean, they, we were coming up with things that had to get done on the fly. And they were just finding ways to make it happen the minute it came up. So just incredible team effort and really, really exciting. So we're excited to keep sharing with the community, the bridge did a nice spread, thank you. Justin's got a video out and that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we'll put out, but.
I feel, I feel like especially given that the focus on, has been on kids.
Yeah.
Those, the videos that Justin has done have been so great to just give everybody kind of a glimpse into what it looks like, what it feels like, what the, how the kids are feeling. Yeah, it's just been, it's been a really nice addition to the, the transition.
That's great. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Really exciting.
Again, I'm just looking at time, why don't we do this? Why don't we go, I want to make sure we absolutely vote on these items. So let's move to that and then if we have time, we can come back to some of the liaison reports if everyone's okay with that.
That's fine.
Okay, so the first one is on the launch retail revolving account. You want to give an overview on that?
So as you know, the space at 199 Silvery Row is about to become a retail space probably before the week is out. Cause we're just having a great week. I, I couldn't believe when that all started to align Sunday night, I'm like, really, am I going to open both of those in the same week? That can't be greater than that. But we need a space for the money to come in and out of. So we're hoping you'll create the revolving account tonight for sales and expenses.
Yep.
I can move it. I'll move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee vote to authorize establishment of a launch store revolving fund. In accordance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 47 and/or any other name of legislation.
Okay, give a second. I need more discussion on this.
I just have a question, is it going to open?
So we got our occupancy permit there yesterday, so it's up and set up.
Like, I know how to do this.
I do, we know how to do this. I am in good standing with all our department heads at town. We, they're set up for a soft opening, so Angel was talking to me this morning in hopes of some soft opening, not huge public opening. We're not there yet, but some soft opening on Friday. So stay tuned, that's the goal.
Okay, well, if you need people.
Yeah, we'd love to invite you. I'll get a few parts. Time and we'll make something happen.
That's awesome.
Okay.
All right, we got ready for vote? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, awesome. The next one is the vote on the CPS Building Service Worker Agreement for CSC.
Yeah, so we had to do some impact bargaining with the middle school building service workers because of the consolidation of the two buildings. So we spent some time in late January and early February talking that through with them. Position wise and how we were staffing the building and some salary differentials because of the change. differentials because of the change in space. And so we've come to agreement with them on that. And we were hoping you could vote that tonight and Carrie could sign it before the week is out and it'll be all good to go.
For you guys, is your?
Yeah. Does someone want to make a motion?
I move to
I look at you.
CPS Building Service Worker Agreement.
Any discussion?
Thank you for that work.
And you, it was you two, right? Alexa and Tracy?
We ended up not needing us for this. Was how amenable. Things were really smoothly. We didn't need extra. Yeah, it was us and Afzmi. It was one, one meeting.
That's great. Um, any more discussion? All in favor?
All right. So before we adjourn, we have like four minutes. Does anyone have any critical liaison updates?
Can I just say one other thing about the middle school? There's one other group that we've not thanked and deserves to be thanked, and it's the Middle School Building Committee. So Alexa and Andrew and the many people on that committee have spent years, like I feel like now we're getting all of the credit for this amazing building that was just handed to us beautifully done. But you guys put in a ton of hours, a ton of work and effort and energy and Dr. Hunter, you as well. To make this like dream become a reality. And so I know that was not easy. So thank you. To you, Alexa, for many years and Andrew for the last year.
And let's shout out Dong. That, that was not a light lift as chairs.
No, they, they, that was a huge effort. So, and it would not have been, been possible if it were not for all of that time.
Will they eventually be in black?
Yeah, it's in the works. Yep. Your Concord Committee is all on it.
Send a note to building committee on behalf of the school committee.
That's a fantastic idea.
And then campus completion, I think the only next step we had is the next meeting we have with Carlisle.
So the subcommittee's meeting this Friday afternoon, the our first meeting since coming back from further vacation. And then next week, the Carlisle CPC is looking for an update that I believe you're doing because I will be away again. Thank you for doing that.
Awesome. Great. I, it's
Put on the agenda for our next meeting. Just because I don't know. I think my recommendation is we should have a place on the website dedicated to amenities building with the warrant article timeline. And I would recommend that. Thank you.
That's a good idea.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
And I do think that there is a, a disabilities commission meeting coming up next week that we should probably start engaging and hopefully we'll talk about that on Friday.
Okay. Are you sure anything from you from back home?
A couple of peers that reached out and interest in the vacant seats.
That's really exciting.
That's great news.
Let us know if you need any help. That's awesome. Well, I, it's almost seven forty five and we have to be out of here. So any, I don't think we need a motion to adjourn, so. Because we're all here. Motion adjourn.